Alright guys, we're ready. It's 6:00 PM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Could I have a roll call and assessment of the quorum please?
Do you want me to do it next or do we roll up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Mike Weigler?
Here.
Cindy Bydington?
Here.
Gary Demasky?
Here.
James Cartman?
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw?
Here.
Matt Crowe?
Here.
Alright, thank you. Um, I have proof of posting. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jordan, are you taking or taking notes?
Yep, Mike's got the notes, I believe, and he's gonna take them here on site.
And I will gladly relinquish that to you next week.
I was gonna say, is that, um, 3:00 AM? Do you think it's taking over?
No.
No, James, roll these out first one.
Improvising.
Yeah, yeah. One for the team.
Alright, we are on to 1.5 approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second?
Sorry, we had Mary Beth and Matt, and then I'll just remind you guys who are here if you could try to Speak up? Speak loud and towards the computers so we can catch the audio here. So yes, we had Mary Beth and Matt.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the agenda or any changes or comments? Alright, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
An alvo yes as well. Okay, we are on to 2.1, elected officials taking oath. Um, Barb's not gonna be able to do this unless she has it though, right? Unless we...
Yep, do you have a copy of it? So I think we'll just go through right here, so why don't we just read them aloud to them right now? Yep, just go ahead and do it from here.
Alright, I, James D. Cartman, have been elected or appointed to the office of Wisconsin High School Board, but have not yet entered upon the duties, therefore I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
What would you say in here, here, Mike?
Sounds good.
Okay. I, Mary Beth Shaw, have been elected or appointed to the office of Wisconsin High School Board, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, then Barb, you'll have to sign these forms when you get a chance.
Yep, I saw that, no problem.
Alright. And we are on to 2.2, election of officers for the 2020 board term.
So we're making motions now?
Yep, so you can make motions for the various positions and then we'll just go right through.
I'll nominate James Cartman for president. Second.
Second from Matt. Mike made the motion for James as president.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Gary Demasky for vice president.
Oh, still on president.
We had to do the first one first.
Well, you asked if there were any more nominations.
Oh, just for the...
For the presidency.
Oh, well, I think it's Kirkets.
Alright, hearing no other nominations. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes.
Alright, thank you guys. Okay, so we're on to vice president.
Now Barb, you wanna say it?
I absolutely will. I'll nominate Gary Demasky for vice president.
I'll second that.
Mike made the second.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations? And for the third time, any other nominations? Alright, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Here.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes.
An alvo yes as well. Okay, we are on to secretary clerk. Or you wanna do clerk? I'm sorry, clerk.
I'll nominate Barb Stoudt for that one.
I'll second that.
So Mike made the motion for Barb. Gary had the second for Barb as the clerk.
Are there any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for clerk? And for the third time, any other nominations for clerk? Alright, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
An alvo yes as well. Thank you, Barb. So we are on to treasurer.
I'll nominate Cindy. Second.
Mike and then Matt with the second for Cindy for treasurer.
Okay, are there any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? And for the third time, any other nominations for treasurer? Alright, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
An alvo yes as well. Thank you, Cindy. Can we have to nominate a seats representative too?
Oh, that's later in the agenda. Yep, so we're good here, actually. I have our mind right here.
Alright, thank you.
So we're on to 3.1, minutes and paper roll.
Alright, so we're on to 3.1, approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes from April 13th of 2020.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mary Beth and then Matt with the second.
Okay, is there any questions? Changes? Okay, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
An alvo yes as well. Okay, we are on to item agenda number four, 4.1, results of the school perceptions facility survey. Sue, I believe you're still on there?
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Excellent. Alright, you're gonna play Man O' White.
Not well, but I will try.
Excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, my assignment tonight is to go over the results of the community survey that we just completed for you last week. So Jordan's gonna move through those slides, moving on. Just a reminder of who we are. We obviously have done some other work with you, but we're a company that helps educational leaders like yourselves organize and use data to make strategic decisions. And like you've experienced, we do this most often through survey work and helping school districts as they navigate either the referendum or strategic planning process. If we take a look at your survey data, um, it was conducted in April of this year. All residents, like last time, were mailed that eight-page paper survey. It had a unique access code on it that allowed people to take the survey once and only once to ensure data integrity. Um, you had 729 residents who were folks respond to the survey. Of those, 188 mailed it back, pen and paper to our office, and we have folks that entered those. You got a participation rate of 28 percent. Um, to that, we say, wow, uh, that's great. So what's typical, an 18 to 20 percent response rate. We also know based on our research that if 28 percent of the homes that received the survey took the survey, um, they became educated on the needs of the district and responded, likely equally as many households read the survey in some capacity. So in that case, just under 60 percent of the households in your district had some sort of interaction with the school district through this process. So certainly, um, that is something to be very comfortable with. So then we dig a little deeper and say, who took the survey? So we look at the survey respondents. So first, we ask folks to tell us their age. Um, why is this important? Well, as you recall from last time, what we wanna do is correlate those who respond to the survey with the voting habits of people. So what do we know? Um, 18 to 25-year-olds in school district referenda typically unlikely or less likely to vote. Now, granted, if you go out in November, it's presidential, they may be more likely in this presidential election and it involves to show up at the polls. But we also know that if they show up at the polls, um, they're likely to be supportive of schools and school referendums and in many cases don't yet own property and so aren't impacted by a property tax increase. We also know that those folks over the age of 65, we wanna see them overrepresented in your sample size and indeed with 22 percent of the respondents they are. So this looks good and really what we want this data to look like when we're looking at age. Then we asked folks to tell us if their primary residency is within your school district. So a perfect 90 percent of those who took the survey live in the district, 10 percent reported that they do not. Um, you're asking yourself, who would that 10 percent be that had an opportunity to take the survey but don't even live in the district? We asked and provided an opportunity for all school district employees and all parents of students that attend school in your district to take the survey. So likely that's who makes up that 10 percent. As we move forward, you will hear me talk about resident respondents. Then we said, okay, um, which municipality is it that you reside? So here you can see 31 percent are in the village of Mesa Mayne, 23 percent in the village of Black Earth, and those other percentages there make up the remainder of those who responded to the survey. We asked folks if they're an employee of the school district, so 106 school district employees or 15 percent of all of those who responded to the survey work for you. And of parents of school-aged kids, um, 311 parents or 45 percent of all of those who responded to the survey have kids in your district. And then we said, if you have school-aged children, which school is it that they attend? Obviously, folks can choose more than one box, so that's why this equals more than 100 percent. 42 percent of the parents, so they have a child at Black Earth Elementary, 36 percent at the high school, 33 percent at Mesa Mayne, and 26 percent attending your middle school, with a small percentage making other educational choices for your children. What you can use this data for, um, post-survey is if you wanna take a peek and kinda separate the data and say, alright, let's look at what just our elementary school parents feel. Jordan has access to that backend portal and he can do some additional desegregation with all of the data that I'm presenting tonight. We asked one question regarding communication. How would you like to receive information from the school or the district? This is good information for a school district to have, whether you choose to go to referendum or not. It certainly sends a message that we wanna make sure that our citizens are connected with the school district and the good work that's happening every day. So now you'll see, this is separated into two groups. Uh, the red lines, that represents your general citizens, non-parent, non-staff, don't work for you, don't have kids in the district. And then the blue line, those are parents that are not school district employees. So your general citizens are saying, we appreciate mailings and newsletters and we look to the Star News as places to connect, but you can also send us emails. Your parents are also saying they like those newsletters and mailings, but certainly email and social media are ways to connect with them. So we dig into the facility planning. The survey really has two purposes. One is to educate, the other is to gather data. So we let folks know that we had done an assessment of all three of your schools with performance services in May of 2018, and we really identified some needs for the district. And based on those needs, we came up with some options of how to address the needs of your elementary school, and we want your citizens to weigh in on those. So the first option was that we would be able to update your two existing elementary schools. We let folks have kind of a general overview of what needed to be done at both Black Earth Elementary and Mesa Mayne Elementary School. All-in addressing the needs at each of those schools totaled $21 million. And we said, okay, if we were to go ahead and have a referendum, that was $21 million, that would cost taxpayers, next slide, yep, $150 for each $100,000 of a home's value. But we did wanna let folks know that that really just is going to, um, that's just gonna address some of the basic needs and not really, um, address some of our educational needs, nor would it allow the district to realize any operational efficiencies. The other option for the district was to look at becoming a one-campus district. So what would that offer if you were able to build an elementary wing onto the existing middle-high school? Would be able to consolidate all operations to one campus? And we'd be able to improve some staffing efficiencies? We would also be able to address those educational needs because we would be, um, create new classroom spaces? We acknowledge that in many cases, this would increase convenience for families and improve those operational efficiencies because now you really have too fewer buildings to maintain, keep, clean, and operate. So this adding this wing was gonna cost us $22 million. We gave people a sketch of what this would look like. So again, $6 more for every $100,000 of a home's value. So we said to folks, okay, we presented two options to address those elementary school needs. Which option do you support? So now this is the first time you're gonna see that I've split your data into three mutually exclusive groups. So the blue bar represents all residents who responded to the survey. So we removed that 10 percent of non-resident respondents that we talked about early on. So of everyone who responded to the survey, 17 percent said, um, I like option one, maintaining those two elementary schools. 56 percent said, I like the idea of option two and becoming a one-campus district. And 27 percent of the respondents said they were undecided or needed more information. However, we can't really look at that blue bar. And the reason is that the blue bar is overrepresented of staff and parents. So what I mean by that is that more parents and staff statistically responded to the survey than who would show up at the polls. So basically, what we wanna do is say, how does the data in the survey correlate to what would happen in a typical election or who would show up at the polls? So what we know is that in a typical school district election, 75 percent of the people that go to the polls fit into the purple bar or those non-parent, non-staff. They don't work for the school, so they don't have kids attending schools. Another 25-ish percent of the folks that go to the polls are parents of school-aged children. So while your staff, the red bar, is extremely important, statistically, school district employees only make up about 1 percent of people at the polls. So therefore, you give a 75 percent leaning to the purple bar and a 25 percent leaning to the green bar. So in that case, we look and we see, again, even if with the blue bar, that the majority of those folks in the purple and green bar are saying it makes sense or they believe they would support becoming a one-campus district. So in addition to those elementary school needs, we also knew that there were some needs at your middle and high school that needed to be addressed. So again, we took it as an opportunity to explain to folks which of those projects the district wanted to tackle and that the cost for those would be $5.5 million. So then we asked folks, how likely are you to support a referendum if it included the above-listed projects to address those needs at your middle and high school? So again, we pulled that data out, but you can see 36 percent of those general citizens said they'd be very likely to support it, with 27 percent somewhat likely, 26 percent not likely, 11 percent, uh, they weren't sure. Your parents were supportive as well, 57 percent saying very likely, 29 percent somewhat likely. Your staff, it's important we know where they're at because they have a critical voice in their messaging and the stories they share with the citizens in your communities. 66 percent of your staff are saying fairly, very likely, 21 percent somewhat likely. So definitely, there is support for those middle and high school projects. In addition, we knew that there were some other needs or perhaps wants at the school that could be addressed. So one was adding a weight and fitness center at the middle and high school at a cost of $2 million, and then an auditorium as well for both school and community use at a cost of $7.5 million. So we said, first, let's tackle that $2 million project. Is this something that the district should explore? That's why we look at that purple bar, friend, so you can see there, 30 percent of your general citizens are saying yes, 50 percent are saying no, 20 percent are saying that not sure. Now might be a time we say, well, what happens to those not sure's? Well, typically, a third of those folks moved to yes. Two-thirds are just too nice to tell us no right away. So in essence, you could think, okay, if I was looking at this, you might pick up another 6%, 7% of your general citizen's support, but at this point, doesn't look like there's a majority of support for your weight and fitness center. Then we take a look at the auditorium project, again, at that $7.5 million cost. Here, we got a bit more support from your general citizens, so nearly dead even, 42 percent support from that group. Um, we're going ahead with that, 41 percent no, sitting at 17 percent undecided. Again, you pick up another 5%, 6% of folks that weren't sure that would move to yes, that you're sitting just under 50 percent support there. So then we move along and we say, okay, that's where we know things are at. And oh, and then when should we build these? So when we look at this, what we can see is that, you know, 30 percent of your general citizens are saying within the next two to five years, with 13 percent saying as soon as possible. So in this case, what we would say is that it looks like that weight center and auditorium likely is something that people do support, but may not be something that we address right away. But at the end of the day, it comes down to one thing, it comes down to money. So we say, well, let's take a look and see what the funding support for these projects is. So we really ask people to reflect on four price points. A $21 million project, that was to maintain those two elementary schools. 22 would allow us to build that wing. There was an additional $5 million in projects to address some extra needs at your middle and high school, so an all-in at $27 million. And then if now was the time we were gonna address the weight and fitness center as well as your auditorium, the all-in would cost $37 million. So the next slide, this is the most important one, I call this the mind-numbing slide. So I want you to focus your attention first on the bottom bar, so the one that says all residents. So what we can see is that 32 percent of the folks who responded to the survey said that they would accept or support the tax increase associated with the all-in, doing everything we presented in the survey and the tax increase of a $37 million bond. 22 percent of everyone who responded to the survey said that they were okay at the $27 million mark, so they would assume the tax increase at the $27 million. So I make an assumption that since the tax increase at $27 million is less than the tax increase at $37 million, I can say that 54 percent of those who responded to the survey who live in the district support the $27 million project. However, from earlier in the lesson and the presentation, we know that we can't look at all resident respondents because it's overrepresented of parents and staff, so it doesn't correlate with the statistics of who goes to the polls. Therefore, you really need to focus your attention on the top bar, the non-parent, non-staff residents, because they make up the majority of folks at the poll. Really, we give them a 75 percent leaning. So when we look at that, we can see that you've got 43 percent support at the $27 million mark. We add those other 15 percent on there of folks who are supportive at the $22 million mark, and you've got 58 percent support for a $22 million project. So we know those folks make up 75 percent of the folks at the polls, and we can see there, the folks that make up 25 percent of the folks at the polls, your parent residents, they're more supportive of both the $37 and the $27 million project. So there, you've got 77 percent support for the $22 million project. So where does that leave us? So the way this works is it's like a simple math equation. You think back to, uh, fifth grade math and the order of operations. So you've got 58 percent support in that top bar at the $22 million mark, and that makes up 75 percent of the folks at the polls. So you multiply that 58 times .75. And then you look at your parents, so 77 percent support for the $22 million project, and you multiply that 77 by .25. And what we can tell you is that you've got just about 63 percent support for a $22 million project. So definitely, strong, strong support for moving to the one-campus and addressing those elementary school needs. But we certainly saw that there was support for the $5 million in projects for your middle high school, that it's an existing middle high school. So if we look and say, well, would a $27 million referendum be successful? And again, if we look at this and we think about the 75, 25, 43 percent support times .75, and then 66 percent support from your parents at .25, you're sitting at just over 48 percent support from those two groups for a $27 million bond. So what to do? Couple things that internally our team has talked about. One, I think we need to be sensitive to where we're at right now as, um, communities, certainly living in unprecedented times. The economy looks different today than it did the first of February, and we don't know what it will look like in November. So we wanna be somewhat conservative. Given this, um, and the fact that you're sitting at 63 percent support, we do feel comfortable that a $22 million project would likely have success. We also believe that your citizens understand that that would create some nice efficiencies and help save the district some other funds for operations, and that would be important. But certainly, you do have support for some of the projects at the middle high school. So our recommendation really is that you could... So our recommendation really is that you could move ahead with those and add a second question to the ballot for the five million dollars in projects at the middle high school. So certainly, don't risk the twenty-two million dollars in meeting your elementary school needs, but we think that there's an opportunity to indeed address those needs now. We also acknowledge that you do have a lot of citizens that are supportive of all of the projects and the auditorium and weight and fitness center, but we do see that as perhaps a not at this time and something we'll look at in the years to come. So with that, I will pause and open it up for any questions, or Jordan, or any of the rest of the team that worked on this, if they want to add some comments before questions, please do so.
So I have a question. Can you hear me?
One second. Sue, I just unmuted, I do have a question here from somebody that's in the boardroom. So Mary Beth, one of our board members, is going to ask a question. Let me know if you can hear it.
So you had a group that needed more information, and then I see on here there's like twenty percent that wouldn't support any referendum up at the top of non-parent residents. Did any of those offer any comments when they were having the opportunity to do so?
Great question. Yep. So a couple of things I just want to address. When you look at that, I would not support any referendum. I was excited to see that of everyone who responded to the survey, you were sitting at just eleven percent in that not interested in supporting anything. Sometimes we'll see those twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent no support. So certainly, that guides us and sends a message that people indeed are willing to be supportive. So again, I think that's a piece that looks very positive there. As far as the comments, we're in the process of organizing those for you according to themes. So what I mean by that is we have a team of people, that multiple people that will read the comments, and then look and see what types of things were repeatedly said. And then we'll provide those to you in that form of organization. I intentionally don't bring the comments forward on the night that I bring the data. Why? Because the comments will always correlate to the data, okay? That we just know. I'm not going to say I would support thirty-seven million and then write things that say I wouldn't support anything. But it's easy, if we look at the data and then we jump to comments, for someone to read one comment and go, yep, that's what everybody thinks, that's what I hear all the time. No, that's what you might hear from two or three people, but you hear it enough that you feel like you hear it all the time. So what we want boards to do when people are making decisions is to spend four or five days thinking about the data, analyzing, kind of digesting the data, and then we'll provide you with that comment theme summary, where then you can read the comments in an organized fashion to help kind of frame and tell the rest of the story of, here's what people were thinking as they were responding. So I'll get that to Jordan either Friday or early next week, and then he'll forward that report to you.
All right, thank you.
Hey, this is Cindy, I do have a question as well. So, you know, you said, you know, our all folks certainly is much different from February to what it is now heading into May. So looking, you know, to November, we've got quite a few months yet to go with a lot of uncertainty. Is there thoughts or, you know, and I know you, there's, there's no other data to really reflect how we're, you know, going to sit right now, but thoughts on kind of us moving forward? Are we in a good position to even continue considering this without that really knowing what's happening to the economy come up just a few more months now? You know, what's your thought on that?
Yep, I think that's a really thoughtful question. A couple of things. One, we've looked, you know, first I would move to what happened in the April election, okay? So we had twenty-six questions that were on ballots, I think in Wisconsin, all but two passed. The two that didn't pass were both districts we had worked with and done surveys. In both cases, they were projects that we knew had a high likelihood of not being successful. So the data in those two cases said it's unlikely that those would pass, and really the outcome of those elections was nearly dead on with what the survey data said. So in other cases, the NINAs, you know, other projects, the data was, was really right on the money as far as what people had said during the survey, and then really in the heart of crazy time in that early April, and now we're still living in it, folks were still supportive of schools. So that's one data point to consider. I think another piece, and we've heard it in other districts we've been working in, and I think thoughtfulness is, I think there's many people that because of what's currently going on, their eyes are open to the critical role school districts play in communities of things that they didn't realize, the feeding of kids, the providing of social emotional support, of all that teachers are doing to support kids and families during this time. So I think that's, it's an opportunity that folks are saying, we'll give schools whatever they need, they are a critical piece of our community. So I think that's another, you know, point to just consider. And then third, you know, you don't need to certify your question to move to referendum until late August. And so you've got great data here, so you can hang tight before finalizing a decision as things kind of shake out, and I think we'll hopefully all have a better sense of where things are moving as we move through June and July, that then you'll be able to make a decision. The other benefit I think you have is that this isn't a bubble project. And by a bubble project, I mean, you're not sitting at, you're sitting at fifty-one, fifty-two percent support today. You know, you were getting, we were surveying while, you know, the pandemic was out there and things were going on, and you're still sitting at sixty-three percent support. So it's likely you'll, you might lose some folks that would like to support the schools, but their personal economic situation has changed and they can't. But, you know, you've got a thirteen percent wiggle room there, so I think you've got that to your advantage. And in that case, that's a big piece of why we're suggesting the two-question option should you choose to support.
I have a question. Hi Sue, this is Barb. And I apologize if I'm not phrasing my thoughts right, but I'm sure, as you know better than anybody, how we phrase a question and word order and how things are communicated are incredibly important and can play a role in people choosing which, which answer. My concern all along is, has been the price point, and we've kind of talked about the prices that we, and amounts for the referendum that we would have given people as options. And my thought is, how many people chose twenty-two million because that was the lowest option? And had we given twenty-seven million as our lowest, they would have just chosen that because that, you know, was the lowest of the options, rather than really sitting down and doing the math and figuring out the price point of what they really want to support, they had just chosen the lower end of the spectrum. You know, how, how does that play in as if we chose to do a two-question and, you know, chose twenty-seven as just the lower option and, and, you know, did the auditorium or something as the second question? Does that play a role in the percentage of people looking at, well, I know I don't want an auditorium or a fitness center, so I'll choose, you know, the other question that's twenty-seven million, just because that's a thought process of how people kind of go through those?
Good question. So here's, if we look at the slide that's up, a couple of things. So I want you to remember that the survey has two purposes. One is to educate, and the other is to gather data. So we need to move people through a process of understanding how we get to twenty-seven million, how we get to thirty-seven million. So we kind of have some places where we need to break things up. So, and we've identified that your most critical need in the district is really to address the needs of your elementary school. So, you know, we have to, we have to figure out how, how we're going to tell that story. So it's either all-in, or we want people to know, okay, we still have to turn right or turn left regarding our elementary school need. So we needed to let folks know those two pieces, and then say, in addition to that, whether the two elementary schools remain, you know, independent buildings or not, there's still some needs at the middle school that need to be addressed. So if you look at that, even that top bar of those general citizens, only fifteen percent of your general citizens are saying, I'm going to stop at twenty-two million. So twenty-three percent said, yep, I'm going to go twenty-seven million. And the thought process is, they are willing to support what they can afford and what they value. So we had to move them through and say, okay, you know, do you value anything at all with the elementary schools? And then do you value the work that needs to be done at the middle school? So we really had, the goal is to walk people through it if they're buying, so I can kind of see, you know, where is it that people are like, nah, I'm not there? So we don't, we lose some people once we jump, you know, the twenty-seven-million-dollar mark, just likely a price point piece. But what we see in that, Jordan, if you go back a few slides, when we just look at the, you know, the weight room and the auditorium, go back one, yep, you know, there's more support for an auditorium, but then when we get to the, but can I afford it? That's where people, kind of the rubber hits the road. So is it wrong to have stopped at, or to have gone twenty-two million? Again, we just don't have a crystal ball when we write the survey, so we just want to know, you know, how, how far can we go before we lose support? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Any other questions here? Any other questions here?
Other questions for me? I think is Jim still on? I don't know if she has any insight or anything he wants to add. Jim from Performance Services.
Yeah, he was on before I, I don't.
Yeah, come on, guys.
Nope, there he is.
Was there anything, Jim, that you thought would be important to share from your perspective?
No, just like Sue said, I'm talking with other school districts as well, and everyone's in the same boat. It was good to see these views come back positive, and we're getting a lot of positivity from other districts as well. I think we agreed on the two questions, I'm coming for that as well. It's just, it's different times now, so like you said, we don't have a crystal ball, but I think your best bet would be to go over a few questions. We have our referendum specialists on the line as well, Doreen. Doreen Dempsey, she works for Performance Services. I don't know if you want to say anything, Doreen, if you have any input.
Thank you for the opportunity, but I'm really very, just listening right now, but hello, everybody, my name's Doreen, so nice to see you, so I'll see more of you.
Sue, anything else from your perspective that you wanted to be sure that you were able to share before we kind of wrap this conversation up?
No, I think, you know, a couple of things to celebrate, twenty-eight percent response rate, that's awesome. You know, I think we were nervous of this, as this was hitting, as, you know, the world was turning upside down a little bit, you know, like, would people be so distracted they would respond? So certainly, a solid response rate, which gives us great statistical data, and definitely strong support for a project. So my advice is, you've got time before you need to make a decision. You've got good data, but I think I would, I would just kind of sit tight, watch May, June, and then in July, you can start to kind of see where things are at and move forward. But you certainly do have support, strong support, so, and a good team working on the project.
Well, I appreciate it. It's always interesting to see the results play out over the last few weeks as they have been. Certainly appreciate the expertise that you, Sue, and your team at School Perceptions brings to this, and then, quite frankly, the validity of the process versus trying to do something like this in-house. So I really appreciate what you brought to the table as well.
Great, thanks and good luck, and keep in touch. If we can support you in any way, please let us know.
Sounds good, we'll be in touch.
Thanks.
Take care.
Thank you.
So the first one is just the public hearing, which we don't have any feedback, so we just announce that and we'll wait on the part two.
All right, everybody, we're going to move on to five point one, and it's just informational, so I'm just going to read it. It says, "Public hearing to consider the resolution to request waiver from DPI regarding statutory requirements of the hours of instruction and educator effectiveness for 2019-2020 school year only."
And we did not receive any written feedback regarding this public hearing, and that was our requirement, is to notice it, that there would be a public hearing, and to give people an opportunity to provide that feedback, which we have not received. So we will move on then to five point two.
Five point two is to consider action on the resolution requesting a waiver of hours of instruction and educator effectiveness for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second. Matt, need a second?
Okay, does anybody have any questions or discussion?
I have a question, I don't know if this really pertains to you, but I'm just curious. So are the, like, the days of the school term still going to kind of play out, so the students, the seniors are done at the end of May, the rest of the students will be done the first weekend, June?
Yeah, great question. There's been a lot of dialogue, and I would call it even probably lively dialogue around that topic at the state level and local level. And the advice that our state association is giving us is that we should be making every attempt to uphold the academic calendar that we approved, you know, once upon a time. So in our case, yes, that means that the seniors will be done, I believe the date is May twenty-second off the top of my head, and then that the rest of the students would be done on June fifth. Now, admittedly, what, you know, that last week in June looks like for our students in the off-site learning and how that kind of winds down and comes to an end, I'm not going to claim I know all those details today, but I can tell you that our intention as a district is to go through what we had approved in our initial calendar. Are there any other questions?
Okay, hearing no other questions, we will move on to our vote. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay, moving on to district business personnel. Unless somebody has an objection, I'm going to combine six point one through six point one-two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
So we have Barb and Gary who made the motion for personnel to combine six point one through six point one-two.
Are there any questions or discussion regarding any of those?
Just put it at the top and then just write that they were combined.
Okay.
It's a tough job, Mike, isn't it?
Just want to make sure I'm going the right way.
All right, well, hearing no discussion, I just wanted to take the opportunity. So I've worked personally with Aubrey, with Kat, and as well as Mrs. Wolliver, both, you know, personally, my kids have, have worked with them, and they each have their own kind of unique jobs. They're not all the same, they each have their own unique responsibilities, but each one of them was exceptional in what they did. So they, they'll be missed, and I just wanted to recognize them as they move on to their exciting other adventures that they'll be pursuing.
So I have one comment. It looks like we're getting a kind of a legacy here. Mary K. Dees was with us for so many years. Mary Kay Deese was with us for so many years, it looks like, it's her daughter that got hired here. So if any of you remember Mary Kay, what a stellar teacher she was. We can only hope that her daughter follows in her footsteps.
I know that Liz and the team thought the same way and is looking forward to the same.
That's exciting.
All right, well, if there's no other discussions or comments, we will move on to our vote. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Okay, we are on to seven point one, "Action to approve an extension to the resolution for work and pay continuation during the emergency closure."
If you recall, this was the resolution that we had in our agenda at the end of March. And at that time, we said, a month from now, we'll bring this back if our facility remains closed through the end of the school year, which it's crazy that a month has already passed us by. And obviously, the message is that the facility will remain closed through the end of the school year, and we will continue with our off-site learning. So this is what we had discussed previously, is just the same, the same resolution that we had approved at the end of March to continue to take care of our employees locally as they work in a variety of capacities for the school district, some still coming onsite and others working offsite and online.
I move to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
Matt beat you to it.
Okay. I'll second, this is not taken.
No, so we had Matt, and then Cindy with the second, yep.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or discussion regarding this? Okay, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. We're on to seven point two, "Action to approve an addendum to our transportation contract with Rightway Bus Service."
Same situation here. We had had this on the agenda previously, and this is just looking to continue with the same terms of the previous addendum. And the purpose of this is to continue to have Rightway maintain our local drivers. So when we are able to resume normal operations, those individuals are still employees of Rightway Bus Company. There's also provisions in here that if Rightway were to receive stimulus dollars or something else from the government, that we would renegotiate and discuss the terms of this agreement.
Is there a sunset date on this?
June fifth, the last day of the school year.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So we had Mike, and then I want to give it to Mary Beth on a second.
Okay, just sort of clear, so this goes until June fifth, and then it's sunset. So if you guys have any questions about how long it goes for that, that's the date. All right, any other discussion or, or questions about this? All right, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Okay, we are on to district business board issues.
Yeah, we probably should, just because eight point five isn't an action item, it's just a discussion point.
Okay, eight point one, "Action to designate one or more public depositories."
So these items, sorry, Gary, I can see where.
I'm going to make a motion. We've kind of covered this before, but go ahead, Jordan.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the, the items in here are all items that we typically do. These are all things that we've done traditionally here at the organization meeting in April. So, and our, our language or what we're suggesting is status quo from the previous year. So I just wanted to mention that to everyone who.
Yeah, so I'll read the recommended action too, because it did list what we've done in the past for our depositories. So the recommended action is to designate the People's Community Bank and the State Bank of Cross Plains as our public depositories for the district.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Matt seconded.
Discussion? All right, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. We're moving on to eight point two, "Action to designate an official newspaper, which is the Star News as our newspaper for the publication slash legal notices."
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Matt beat you to it onsite, Gary?
I gotta talk up louder.
Questions or discussion for this one? All right, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. We're on to, "Action to designate primary legal counsel as a boardman and clerk for our district and authorize the administration to obtain other counsel as needed."
I move to.
I'll make a motion to designate a boardman and clerk as our legal counsel.
All right.
I'll second.
I've got Gary and Cindy.
Any questions or discussions for this one? All right, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. We're on to, "Action to appoint a CISA II representative." Currently Cindy holds the position.
Cindy, how do you make a vote?
If anybody else wants it, they can certainly have it. I am still on the board for CISA, it's very entertaining. Thankfully, right now, it's, there's no driving, so I have to drive an hour and a half, which is nice. But if anybody else wants the opportunity, it's up to the grounds. But I will certainly keep it.
I'm going to make the motion to keep Cindy by CISA's CISA II representative.
I'll second that. Mike had a second on that one.
You're doing a great job, Cindy.
Thanks.
All right, does anybody have any other comments or anything? If not, we'll just go ahead and move to our vote. All right, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Eight point five is committee preferences. Appointments will be made by May eleventh. I already sent out a text message today about you guys giving me your preferences. And like I said in the text message, it's important for us to establish the committees and have chairs both for discussion during our committees as a whole, but also for the purpose of if we ever decide to go back to a committee format that we already have all of that established, and we won't have to try to create it at the last minute. So if you haven't already, continue to send me your committee preferences, and we'll get something informal or formally written down and established. All right, so we're on to eight point six, "Action to approve the discontinuation of the state life insurance plan."
Just a little background on this one. We really needed to make some changes to make sure that what was written into employee contracts was actually something that we were able to do with the vendor that we were working with. And we did just run into some issues with things not being able to be changed or adjusted to meet the needs of what we had to do for our staff. So that's really what forced us to look around. We believe the product provides the same experience for our staff and actually is a benefit to the district financially as well. So that's why we're suggesting that we make a change at this time.
I move to approve the discontinuation.
Make that motion.
Matt beat you to the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Cindy.
Is there any discussion or questions regarding this? All right, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Okay, we're on to nine point one and nine point two, "Set committee dates slash future meeting dates."
Jordan, you want to talk a little bit about what we can expect from the May fourth meeting?
Yeah, so just perfect segue into nine point two, just to confirm, May fourth. And admittedly, I can't give you a ton of details because I have a conference call on Wednesday with Doreen, who you saw briefly on the screen, and with Jim to kind of discuss next steps on communication and then ways, you know, that they can collaborate with the board and the district and kind of what that will look like. So what I, what I really anticipate that being is a very collaborative, open dialogue just regarding, you know, the communication timelines that we've discussed in the past, and then what community engagement would look like for June, July, and August as we potentially let up to a resolution in August. So, you know, more details to come. And like I said, I have a Wednesday conference call with them to finalize those details. But everyone can expect to see a Zoom invite for that meeting. Doreen and Jim will be participating remotely, and we are planning to start that at five o'clock. Hopefully that works for people.
I'll just say then maybe tentatively plan for the May eleventh, some type of PR discussion. You know, maybe aftermath of what was discussed at that meeting or anything future that anybody wants to discuss in terms of PR.
Okay, sounds good. We can highlight that as one of our key topics for the discussion agenda.
I have one question for the board, just out of thought. Since we still can't go anywhere technically until the twenty-sixth, should we keep the board meeting on the twenty-fifth, which is the Memorial Day? Or do you guys want to keep it for Tuesday?
I prefer Tuesday.
My calendar's pretty full, Cindy, I don't know when they check.
I know, it's, it's pretty full for everybody.
Whatever's on with me.
Mike said he preferred Tuesday is, is fine with Mike.
Monday may work fine.
But Monday would work too. Well, we have four weeks to decide, how about that?
Sounds great. Maybe everything's going to change and we'll all go back to normal by then.
You never know.
I appreciate that optimism.
All right, well, if nobody has anything else, then we're on to item number ten, which is adjournment.
Matt made that motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mary Beth with the second?
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Thank you guys all for coming, for participating. This is kind of crazy, Zooming and taking care of all this stuff behind the scenes, but I think we're doing a pretty good job, so let's just all keep it up.
Yeah, I, thank you, everyone, and thanks to all of the admin staff for coming on too.
Yep, sounds good. If anyone has any questions, let me know. If not, I do plan to summarize the things from tonight, because we obviously had a lot of action. I plan to summarize that with a video message to the staff, and I will copy in the board and the admin on that as well. Thank you very much, guys. Have a good night. I'm going to end the share.
All right.
All right, thank you. Bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Cooperative Education Service Agency, there's several in the state. You're going to CISA II, which is down in Whitewater.